Okay, welcome everybody to our council meeting on October 18th, 2022. Everybody's had a chance to review the agenda. I'll add, if everybody's comfortable with that, can I get a motion please? Moved by Deputy Mayor Headley, seconded by Councilor Puddle. Be it resolved, the Council of Towne Niqwa do now approve the regular meeting agenda for October 18th, 2022. All in favor? Okay. Okay, in the minutes, everybody's had a chance to review the minutes. I'm comfortable with that. Okay, so can I put forward the motion on that? Moved by Councilor DeDoe, seconded by, uh, Councilor Gerard, sorry. Be it resolved, the Council of Towne Niqwa approve the minutes of the regular meeting held October 4th, 2022. Add a circuit, all in favor? There. Okay, we have a presentation in regards to the Riverbend Market proceeds, Niqwa Tourism. Somebody was coming up for that, Owen?
Well, I'd just like to thank everyone for, for the time today. For those of you, my name is Owen Deveraux, representative with Niqwa Tourism. Very pleased to be able to be here and share this with you. And of course, if my father's watching and I didn't get off, get off of my chair, I would hear about it. So please, I insist.
Oh, and my name is Barb Bone, and I'm with Niqwa Tourism as well.
So we're very pleased here today to be able to, uh, present this check to the Town of Niqwa for, very importantly, the swimming pool upgrades that are going to be going on. And we are offering $3,990 from the proceeds that came from our Riverbend Makers Market. For those of you that aren't familiar, the Makers Market's been on for a few years. It's an event featuring artisans and craft people from all across Manitoba. The hope was that it was going to attract individuals from all over Manitoba to be able to come into town, see some of these interesting items, and perhaps spend a little bit of time in some of our community stores as well. Over the past two years, it has grown in size, and we feel like it has become a very good attraction for the Town of Niqwa. So as part of tourism, we are very pleased to be able to give this check the Town of Niqwa, which will be able to use towards the continued improvement of our swimming pool.
Perfect, thank you very much. Yeah, is there anything?
Um, so the check represents the admission for those that attended the Makers Market. So it was $5 for adults too, um, the admission was $5 per adult. And this year, we had just under 800 people that, um, attended. And so that brings people to the Town of Niqwa, and hopefully they're shopping and, um, staying at the hotels or at the campgrounds. So, um, we had, um, agreed to, um, donate the admission towards the upgrading of the pools, so.
Perfect, thanks very much. That's great.
Who should I present the check to?
Might as well give it to Colleen.
Who wants a check? If you'd like me to keep it on purpose, perhaps I'm more.
Get your picture.
Get your picture.
Barb will just get that picture.
Sure?
A picture? This is your last picture, get it up here with her.
Yeah, no, it's a great event. Yeah, Brian was at it, I was at it, I don't know whether the other councils were, but yeah, no, it's a great event.
No? Alright, so.
Just need 20 more of those now.
Never a bad way to start off a meeting with money. Perfect. Okay, um, we are on to council reports. Anybody have a council report? Counselor DeDoe.
Oh, this is Counselor Perry, wonderful first year.
Okay. Record, I like my thoughts.
Okay, uh, yeah, the Justice Committee is back in action again. We, last week, we had a case and we were able to help with some diversion. Our Trail Association, uh, we just had Ed the Hiker, a famous hiking celebrity. If you look him up, Google Ed the Hiker, he's from Ohio, I understand. He just went through the trail and he started a muscle and he's walked all the way. He's supposed to be in vortige by the end of this week, so he's a path meat boy now. And he's been using the trail, and even though there's a little bit of overgrown in the Rosedale section, uh, we understand now that, uh, Rosedale did repair the section of trail that washed out previously, so that's good. So if anyone wants to use our trail, the Roseburn Trail Association is fully functional. You can use it, uh, it's a temporary fix though, so come spring, it'll wash out again until we put culverts in on the trail system. So good news that, uh, they've been able to do a temporary fix to allow people to get by on their sleds or quads, or walking, of course. And then one more report on the library. We're, we're in negotiations with the arm of Whitehead in order to, uh, get them to kind of join in as an auxiliary member. We're, we're in discussions, uh, as a whole group, if we could consider removing library fines, because that puts a lot of pressure on people with low socioeconomic status, especially with inflation and COVID. Uh, the amount that is being suggested and talked about tomorrow night for our meeting is a 50 cents levy increase. And with our population of 5685 now, uh, our current total price to be part of the library is $55,308. And with that increase, it would bring us up to $71,063. So, uh, quite a big jump.
Yeah, it's a big jump.
About 15,000. Uh, in September, we circulated 1,214 items out of our library. Uh, a lot of that had to do with lower numbers based on the construction going on on Davidson right now. Makes it challenging. Some good news to report though is, uh, our local library here. Uh, with that construction, we've stirred, uh, we've stirred, we've, we've installed a curb assi- uh, curb access. So wheelchair access is now part of that curb that has been done, so that's gonna make the library more open for users. So everyone's very happy about that already, even though, you know, we're still waiting on the paving. But, uh, the, the book club is also back at the library and they need that lunch. So if you are interested, you can contact our local library here in Niqwa, and, uh, our librarian Debbie will hook you up with their book club. And I understand, uh, when they meet, they, they eat just as much as they read, so it's a fun time. And that's everything from the library, it's like, thanks.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions, any comments? Okay, Counselor Parrott.
Okay, well, we, I guess, uh, from a Natco point of view, um, we support the What's the Big Idea, which happened last week, and it was a nice success. Natco's, uh, prize winner, like Natco does put, uh, forward a prize. Mariam Ver Deso, for the All-In Boutique. So that will become formalized, uh, at our Natco meeting. Uh, for the clinic lottery, we had the Early Bird Draw on Sunday. So the winner of the Early Bird Draw is Paul Wisnowski from Eden. So that happened, and the final draw, I believe, the number six for their votes. And, uh, yesterday, we had Urban Systems in for an active transport, uh, transportation study. So they're a consultant firm that is going to be looking at, um, active transportation routes within the Town of Niqwa. You know, for planning. And I guess that's, it, other than the clinic meeting will be tomorrow.
Great.
Oh yeah, the tender's closed today, so it's for the roof and canopy.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mary. Anybody else? Okay, Mad Operations, Denise.
All right, thank you, very impressive. Well, let's quickly discuss the pools, is that, uh, right now, all our contractors are on hold for the pool. We'll kick off everything again in the spring. Uh, commercial pools have completed some of the rockets for the plumbing, and they've got a lot of stuff trashed in. I'm not too sure if Bill has had any opportunity to put the piles in, and then we'll do the remainder of the company work. This lab has let that set up, it built up quite a big area for that new pattern. Uh, streets are prepped, we've, uh, Davidson Mall prepped up, and in front on Mount Navi with the Yellowhead, that's all prepped up. We just have to, uh, enlarge our paving areas slightly, just at the intersection. We went out and looked, it looked like we might try to drive from up there if we didn't fan it a little bit more. So I thought we'd better do that now than after. Uh, paving is scheduled for tomorrow, so we'll just, uh, apologize for the inconvenience right now. I think we'll hack it during town. Uh, water center projects are still ongoing. We've, uh, had Smiths, uh, working with the Home Hardware site, so we've been collaborating again with that build, servicing that property. We've also been working on servicing the, uh, Cameron, or the Cameron, so the new apartment at Murray Block. So that's been going on, as Counselor Perry indicated, the curb systems developed, so I researched around, and I've looked at how to improve, uh, a little more active flow around town. So whether it be walking to work or biking, uh, just trying to improve that. And then also take some consideration into our new subdivisions and how we can better lay out, again, the flow for pedestrian access. Uh, sidewalk and curbs are ongoing, uh, we're still, our contractor working on those, so they're still taking them off the list. They had quite an extensive list going on. Unfortunately, our moving contractor was delayed, uh, with extended work with the, another R and D working with, so I think he's planning to be here, uh, possibly this week or next week, so we can continue our, finish off our fall moving program. Uh, projects on the whole right now, since we've, uh, kind of paused, I think, to, uh, expansion, and Hamilton Street, and then also the Main Street drainage project. Uh, the two utility ones, we just wanted to wash our utility bucket, so we're kind of nearing that scary time here. We don't want to run deficits, so those projects will be kind of on hold. Uh, Main Street project, we had some, uh, submissions with the ready-made and the proper water, and how we run up drains for programs, so we just decided to put it on hold until we have more discussions with management infrastructure. Uh, so you may go to the new Mount Go Hydro, uh, work has been completed on the CN6, and we now have streetlights in the commercial sector. And they were slated to do the Hamilton piece around the museum, but that again was on hold because we didn't do our infrastructure. So, uh, it looks like they've still penetrated the system luckily. Uh, the province has finally sent over the Dutch Island disease list around town. I did have that list earlier, so we couldn't quote any work out, but now that that's out, uh, I'll seek some quotations for the removal of any diseased or marked towns. And then just a reminder to residents, the dirtways pickup is still ongoing, that's every Monday, until we can have the return dating program.
Okay, well, since it's my last council meeting, uh, could you just go back to the, I'm just kind of curious for the next council. Did you go back to the Eastview Lodge, why didn't you just tell me, you said it was on hold, so it, because obviously that's our last spot that we could actually get 11 houses on, I think. So what, what would the go-forward date on it be, do you know?
Well, I'll talk to our Director of Finance, and we'll look at our books right now. We just want to ensure that we don't cross into that red area on the utility.
Okay, so it is money right now then?
Yeah, so we're really watching what we're expanding right now.
Okay. Yeah, the only other one I was thinking about was on the highway, on Highway 16 there, where Jamie had bought those two lots. I know there was some activity up there at one point, what, what was going on there?
Yeah, we moved, uh, some machinery, we mentioned on site, we also had a material on site. Um, this was a corrective action on drainage, so we were basically gonna try to collect drainage coming from Brown Abbey down the hill, uh, that eventually passed, oh, how many else? That's one, two, I don't know, Castle Lot, three, or four properties. Uh, so we would have done some corrective action, kind of just sweeping the water off of the street, uh, preventing it from paving the gutter line, and then inundating down some driveways. So it has some private property issues where water's going there. Uh, we would have had to work with the homeowners, and unfortunately, some just did not want to work. So we will have to revisit the program. Um, looks like we'll have to probably bring in our sewer lining contractor again that did the work for us this fall, or summer, summer, and reline the culvert. There's a culvert that runs parallel to the highway, it's just in a horrible location. Um, not an easy fix, uh, kind of just inherited the headache from, I don't know, sort of initial construction of the highway. So we'll have to look at how to improve that and see if we can work with management structure and the whole one.
So when you get, when you have a refusal from the homeowner, does that mean you have to change your whole concept, or do you just?
Well, we literally had machinery waiting there, and that's what we got to stop on the project.
Okay. Okay, anybody else? Yeah, Brian?
Uh, Denise, I know the, the more has been weighed, you mentioned that. Um, will, will they be looking at, uh, like the commercial, uh, lots over on the CN property or that? I see, uh, there's been a couple of people just concerned about high weeds and then holding up snow and stuff.
Yeah, I want to try to move every single area we can get into.
Okay, I think that's it, thank you, Denise. Okay, Big Idea Summary Report, Colleen.
So, uh, this presentation is on behalf of Maryland. Before I get to What's the Big Idea, I just want to mention as well, uh, what we're able to find out today is something kind of new. Um, it's kind of a tourism highlight. Destination Canada rules Canada as a premier tourism destination nationally and internationally, with Travel Manitoba and other partners. Uh, Jennifer Horstel is the Senior Program Manager for Destination Development at Destination Canada. Uh, she does come from B.C., she's never been to Manitoba before, so Travel Manitoba is excited to show her our province, along giving her insights into the areas of the province with the most potential for future product and market development. So the excitement of this is Jennifer's coming to Niqwa tomorrow as one of the targeted communities in Manitoba for her to take a look at from more of a Canadian perspective, so that was kind of exciting. Uh, going on to What's the Big Idea, on October 13th, we had our local entrepreneurs pitch at the 7th Annual What's Big Idea event. We actually had four entrepreneurs who walked away with $8,650 in cash and prizes in total. Uh, so just a little history, since 2015, we have 43 businesses awarded $66,000 for, or $66,450 to support and launch expansion of businesses in the region. Uh, so the day kicked off with Mayor McCutcheon gathering greetings, and then we had Don Polk of North Star Seats, um, as a keynote speaker that morning. We had Andrew C. from Futurepreneur, and Bren Swanepoel from Myers North Penny. Highlight Foods sponsored the lunch, and, um, through the lunch, as ever, Julie were eating Marley Soltis, the owner of Inspire Studio in Menedosa, kind of gave a history of where she came from, since being the, one of the winners of the event that actually started in 2015. It was, uh, quite an interesting speech she gave. Um, so just to give you a little idea of the winners, Pork Repair Service won the best pitch of the day, and was awarded $1,000 from Community Future Westnet. Stride Credit Union's best overall idea prize of $1,000, and the best idea in any award from Myers North Penny of $500. Pork's also won $500 from the Niqwa District Chamber, and $500 from the Arma Minto Odera. Jamie Ashton pitched their mobile mechanic service, which offers a range of agricultural repairs onsite or in their shop in London Eden. Mariam, uh, Ver Deso's business, All-In Boutique, won $150 from the Niqwa Lineout, and $2,000 from Niqwa Area Development Corporation, or Natco. The All-In Boutique is a home-based business in Niqwa, providing gown and formal wear rentals, event decor, as well as makeup, manicure, and pedicure and face painting. Dave Cosman and Keith Robulup pitched their business venture called Garlic Guys, and, uh, they grow garlic in Calwa to supply local markets with garlic for flavor enhancement and health benefits. They were awarded the $1,000 marketing package from Proontine, Niqwa banner press, and Provo signs, and $1,000 from the Arma Rosedale. Jesse Kaiser from Niqwa has developed a new gaming application, and his business, Succeeding Life Soccer, has developed Biters, an Android video game where spelling out words will value your points. So the longer your word, the better your value's going to be. Uh, Jesse received $1,000 from the Town of Niqwa. And, uh, it was a wonderful event, I wasn't there the whole day, but for the parts I was there, it was exceptional. Um, the day concluded though with our very own Jody, uh, speaking on behalf of where her journey has taken over in the last years, uh, being a winner of one of the last year's events, and also 262 meets, uh, did a presentation virtually as well about where his journey has gone for, and how, how the event, both of them talked about how it advanced, and then what we learned, and how important these types of events are to, to people that try to start it up small at the beginning, and maybe grow into something a little bit more, so it was a terrific day.
Yeah, no, I, I always tell my own crew that it's, yeah, I know how much she loves putting that, uh, that big idea on. You know what, it's one of my favorite events too, because, you know, I won't say when I started my business in Niqwa, I'm sure some of you were alive, but, uh, it, I, I, you know, it's just, it's always neat to watch those people up there. They're nervous, and they, they have these great ideas, and they're just hoping that, you know, that they're, they're gonna be, people are gonna like what they're doing, and, and, yeah, it's just a, it's really a really good day. Yes, and I enjoyed listening to you too, Jody.
Speaking of nerves.
Okay, uh, RCMP Quarterly Report.
Uh, so this is a narrative, normally I don't speak to the stats, it's, uh, you know, unless we have the RCMP, so you're speaking more to what they mean. Um, but this is a narrative that comes with a period of July versus September period, so just give the highlights. Uh, out of that period, 183 traffic tickets were written in the Spruce Plains detachment, and there was 49 written warnings. Specific to Niqwa, it was only 16 tickets though, so in three months, that's a pretty good deal, really. Uh, they had eight offender management files opened, and 24 perp checks performed on the subject. Looks like everybody's been abiding. Uh, the most important thing in this report would be that there's been a noted increase of thefts, especially the theft of vehicles in the rural area. Uh, why it's important is people are leaving their vehicles unlocked, they're leaving them with the keys in them, and the things in there that could easily be picked up and taken. So if we, you know, if we go back to the nine PM routine, it did only last, I think, 30 days, Jody. Um, we did recommend to the RCMP, it probably wouldn't hurt once a week just to flung that back out there again, get people back in the habit, as we all know, it takes 21 days to create a habit. So we did 30, they, they did achieve that, and it was great, it was going good. But I think people are getting a little more lax again, and you need to protect your property. Uh, currently, there's two vacant positions in the Spruce Plains area. Sergeant Dave Taggart has arrived in September, and he's assumed as a role as the Operations NCO. And, but at this time, there is no replacement named for the vacancies. They selected a new municipal employee to replace, uh, a retirement that's going to happen in February over there, but because of the clearance processes, we had to select the employment quite early, it, it takes significant time. And this particular person actually was already cleared in the system, had a gap between that and moving to Niqwa, so even somebody that was cleared already has, uh, an extensive wait to get back into the clearance system. So we're hoping to have that person running right away over there and start learning the ropes and getting the training done to, to be able to fit right in before February. They are fully operational at the new detachment in Niqwa right now. There are still some items still being moved, they're sorting themselves out over there, and, uh, we will be, we're working on, and we will be announcing a grand opening schedule for November 4th. So just kind of keep watching the, the media and the, and the paper, and people can come have a little look. I will, the key to that is though, uh, people might be disappointed, we will not be allowed through the whole building for security measures and confidentiality. Uh, people will be limited to more of the, the areas that would be of interest to you, which might be the cell walk area and things like that, so, but we have to be very careful and cautious.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Yeah, we're all looking forward to that grand opening. Emergency mentions organization, Colleen.
Uh, so this was a new program in 2020 where, when we had our great flood here in Los Park Lake, as we all know, we're still, two years later, trying to remediate. It takes a long time to get through these things. So at that particular time, uh, because these events and disaster, uh, just the sheer volume of what's going on up there is causing a lot of cost to, uh, through the Disaster Financial Assistance Program. The government said, uh, let's create a program now whereby we can help municipalities ahead of time or following a disaster, mitigate and prepare, so that they did not have to experience similar things in the future. So we created the Mitigation and Prepartness Program. So basically what this is, anytime you have a disaster of such magnitude, such that you have to access your deductible, $100,000 on your insurance claim to, um, pay for recovery and remediation, the government said of that $100,000, that they would give you a fortune that back if you committed it towards a project that would prepare you for future events. So we did, we were granted, uh, for the 2020 flood, the, an amount of $37,000. So as much as everybody says, so you paid about $100,000, you get $37 back. The problem is they use the front-end, um, submissions of your disaster claim to decide what you're going to get. So because ours was such a large claim, it could not be completed for years, the initial submission we gave is where we look up based our mitigation monies out. So it was $37,000, which is nothing to sneeze at, because when we're done remediating after the 2020 flood, I'm gonna suggest we'll be, uh, have to the advantage of our side, $15 million. Um, so this one, for the 2022 mitigation, uh, fund, we were actually eligible for $48,123.53. So these monies, and as well as the $37,000 we got from the first one, will help us relocate buildings out of the flood zone around Riverman Park, and to take a look at where our lift station on Main Street is, and relocate that as well. So we do have a period of time right into, I think it's 2027, I think it is, Jody, to use those monies, and, uh, we're, we've pretty much spent them now, we can almost power planes right away, including the Alphar Motors, but, uh, very fortunate to be eligible for this program and to receive this back, so.
Okay, great. Any questions and comments? Okay, we're down to the financial statement, September 2022. Everybody's had a chance to review it. Everybody comfortable, can we move forward with the motion? Moved by Counselor Gerard, seconded by Counselor Parrott. Be it resolved, or we approve the financial statement for the month ending September 30th, 2022. All in favor? Carry. Okay, Colleen, we're into a tax sale.
So this is just an administrative process, and we're third to legislature. In terms of tax sale, you have to establish a resolution to collect back your costs, and, uh, at the sale, to make sure you received any taxes outstanding and those costs, and make sure conditions apply, should they have to apply. So right now, we probably all know this in the paving, we have three properties there. We expect actually the time tax sale hits in November, we're only gonna have one remaining. It is a property that, uh, we would actually, uh, it's been actually condemned more or less by the Public Health Department's platform. We would have proceeded to the, to the position of demolition, but we are, we have a contractor doing it this year, so we could not get to that stage to actually have the, the house removed. So, uh, the particular property will be on Forest Street, uh, that we'll probably be selling at that particular time. I'm asking you to approve a resolution to get costs and taxes back, and also apply the conditions as stated in the Act 7 Notice in September, that suggests that any purchase of the property will be removing that property, leveling the water, and bringing it back to the biggest stage as part of the sale.
Okay, I guess we're just straight forward. An emotion to move forward, moved by Counselor Gerard, seconded by Deputy Mayor Headley. Whereas pursuant to Section 372, the Municipal Act of Municipality may set any terms and conditions for the sale of a property to be sold for taxes, and may set a reserve bid in the amount of tax arrears and costs in respect of the property. Therefore, be it resolved that the Town of Niqwa place a reserve bid on all properties to be offered for sale on November 2nd, 2022, in the amount of tax arrears and costs, subject to the conditions outlined in the Notice of Public Auction dated September 16th, 2022. All in favor? Carry. Okay, and something there, I have a committee election for the AMM, Colleen.
Um, so this one, the, the viewers might think this is a little presumptuous, because we don't know the results of the election. Uh, I'll explain what's going on here. The Association of Manitoba Municipality, this, uh, when it's required, everything's every two years, they sorts out into municipalities any interest of an elected member of council, whether it be head council or council member, to serve on the AMM board. So at this particular time, nominations are open for the president position and the nomination for the two vice presidents position. So, uh, Counselor Parrott in the past has expressed interest in actually being, uh, one of the vice presidents, and, uh, would like his name to stand. So why this is kind of weird coming tonight, is we don't know who's gonna win the election. So I did ask the AMM board member, uh, board if we could delay till our November 1st meeting to nominate Counselor Parrott, and they said absolutely not. They're violating the Constitution and the AMM clearly says the deadline is October 31st. So if we wait, uh, we would have to wait till the council lets four in, because of course they would have no duties to pass a resolution. So the advice is, if you're, if you're willing to approve this nomination tonight, it clearly will be subject to reelection, otherwise, according to the AMM, they would just view it as a known void, and a non-existence of the nominated candidate. So we're asking, uh, if you do support the nomination of Counselor Parrott, that should he be successful in the election, we would be pleased, I think, to have our representative of Niqwa on the AMM board.
Yeah, no, it would be great to have someone back on that board, and it's unfortunate.
Must be elected. Because it must be elected.
Yeah, Barb, appreciate that. It's just unfortunate the AMM wouldn't. Yeah, I appreciate that. It's just unfortunate the AMM wouldn't move it to the, to the new, any new council. I mean, it's just not going to be our council. It could be, it could be any other council too that might have somebody that wants to.
Especially when we have fixed election meetings and the problems, whatever was the same.
Yeah, it's not worth it.
It's not, yeah. If I submit a delay in two weeks, all this would result.
I know. I'd be well comfortable with that. Someone wants to move forward with a motion? Moved by Councilor Liddo, seconded by Deputy Mayor Hedley. Be resolved, the council of town Niipua hereby nominate Councilor Murray Carey for the position of vice president of the, vice president of the Association of Manitowoc Municipality. All in favor? Carry. Okay, Colleen, we're down to a sale of property.
So we've received some interest on industrial park lot. So this is exciting. As much as we try to promote, the interest just hasn't quite been there. We have tire pickups and I think now I would suggest the catalyst for this would be, you know, the Romans out there, the hospital coming out of that direction. So basically what this is going to be is an offer of purchase of industrial park lot nine by Dimitri Schiller from Stone Cliff Builders. And he's proposing to put up a five bay garage type of a situation out there that we, you've seen them in different communities that we've got to program. So you could take some of your debt for a week and put in your mortgage or something or whatever the case may be. So we stood firm on our purchase price up there for two acre lot, basically $15,000 acres. The purchase price would be $30,000. We did meet with Mr. Schiller, our team in-house here. We made it clear terms. This would be, should we agree to sell the lot to him to be subject to a development agreement? We would require this based on our drainage plan that was created for the industrial park. There'll be drainage easement on the north end to make sure we can achieve the drainage plan requirements as per conservation climate. And we would put a two-year construction timeframe on there under our land sales policy. We would also make sure that at the moment, there only have water going by. Clearly they're going to connect to water, but at some point in the future under our most recent water wastewater bylaw. Right now, they would be putting in a holding tank likely. And in the agreement, we're going to suggest that if we end up extending sooner there for an effective reason, because we have to extend it for the purposes of the new hospital. If it goes down industrial road there though, there will be a requirement to connect as is indicated in our most recent bylaw. So I think we just have to outline all those things in clarity so that we know where we're at. And if he's having questions, we'll answer them.
Yeah, no, I think it's pretty straightforward. I mean, it's the amount that we've asked for. You've got all the i's, not if the t's crossed in terms of two years and all the water and the sewer. No, I, I, yeah, I'm very comfortable with it. Any other questions or comments? Councilor Parry?
The development officer, do clarify that because it was, being said it was a shot kind of thing, it would be well captured as part of the, you know, the holding tank and, you know, sewer issues.
Okay, makes sense.
So just be clear, not in our agreement, but through the zoning bylaw that's a requirement as part of the code.
Okay, and everybody's comfortable with that? We'll move forward with motion. Moved by Councilor Parry, seconded by Councilor Peddle. Be resolved, have we approved the sale of lot nine, plant 6618, the industrial park, south east 34, 14, 15 west, roll 8958 to Dimitri Schiller of Stone Cliff Builders Inc. for the amount of $30,000 plus applicable taxes and costs, subject to the terms of the development agreement. All in favor? Carry.
I'll maybe just add to that, if, to get people started talking to the right direction. We talked about it in industrial park road. Some people say it's McKay Road. That is not a true name. It's never been named McKay Road. It's actually Hamilton Street. So when plans go through for the way this is going to look, it's going to be Hamilton Street. So if anybody wants to talk about out at the industrial park, it is the industrial park, but it's situated on Hamilton Street.
Okay, we are down to other business. I know Councilor Peddle and myself, it's our last time at the table here. But before we chat, I think Deputy Mayor Hedley has something to look forward.
Yeah, yeah, it's unfortunate that Councilor Costin, which isn't here tonight, because this is actually the last time that we will eat together as a group. And so, you know, we want to express our thank you to yourself, Blake and to Darren. And, you know, we've worked together now for, for four years and certainly appreciate, you know, the committees that you, that you have worked on and with Darren, with yourself, with Yellowhead, with Arts Forward and other committees that you've been on. And, you know, for myself, I only knew you with our kids, grade four teacher. And, and so it's been, it's been really nice to get to know you on a more personal level and we definitely appreciate the work that you have put in. And Blake, I know this has been a really rowdy, difficult group to work with.
Yeah, I know, it has been.
But certainly we appreciate the leadership that you've brought to the role here and we all enjoy it very much working with you. And so we want to thank you. We do expect you both to return at, at the Christmas party so that the rest of the staff can also say hello to you guys. But in the meantime, we certainly, we certainly wish you guys the best and thank you. And the town should be thanking you as well for the hard work that both of you have put in for the last four years.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you. Okay, Councilor Peddle, you get to go first.
Okay, I have to read this because I can't look at anything. For the past four years, it has been a tremendous adventure, full of learning, and the time has flown by just so quickly. This is my final council meeting for now, as I'm not running for town council in the next term. First of all, I'd like to thank Mayor McCutcheon for his leadership. It has been an absolute honor to work with you over the past four years. Thank you for your guidance, your dedication in doing what was needed, facing many difficult decisions as our community continues to rapidly grow. Thank you for always being available to discuss any topic, anytime throughout the entire term and throughout such unbelievable challenges as the flood of 2020 and the COVID pandemic. Next, I'd like to thank the town councilors that I've had the privilege to sit beside and work with throughout the term. The professionalism presented by each and every one of you helped to make what I feel was such a strong team over the past four years. Many meetings start well before the camera gets turned on and our town council meetings are recorded. And although we didn't always agree, I've always felt that we could understand each other's perspective in helping to make the best decision for our great community. Thank you to the administrative staff that I've enjoyed working with at the town office. Thank you for your guidance in helping me learn throughout the entire term. Thank you for, for your patience in the many, many, many questions I've been asking. I wish the new council continued success for the next term and beyond. It's so wonderful to see new candidates that have wanted to become a part of this strong team. And I hope those that will be experiencing the perspective of a town councillor for the first time find it to be as rewarding as I have. One of the considerations I made when choosing to run for council four years ago was believing that being a councillor for the town of Niipua could be my next chapter when I'm ready to retire from teaching. I'm just not quite ready to leave teaching yet. So I'm simply placing this chapter on hold until hopefully I'm ready to return. Maybe four years from now, with the support and confidence of the town voters, I'll feel it's time to continue to write this chapter of being a councillor for the town of Niipua. Thank you.
Darren, I should have gone first. Okay, so I'll see if I can. Thanks, Darren. Well, first of all, I think I was going to say, I'm sorry I missed the, the forum last night. I had another meeting and it ran late, but I did watch it on the AC TV this morning. And I think our new mayor, Brian, is going to have, I mean, he got a guy who's going to have a great council here. I mean, there were some really good candidates, really good questions. I mean, of the nine there, I don't know who the six are going to be, but yeah, the town's going to be well served by the next council and I know Brian's going to be very fortunate to have him. So that's good news. What else? You know, yeah, the four years goes very quickly, obviously. You know, the council, you're, and Darren's right, but you know, it's about chemistry too, right? I think it's kind of like a sports team in some respects. And you know what? We just all go along, right? And we kind of have the same vision and I don't know if that ever happens at every council or all councils, but we were very fortunate in this council that we all had that same future look that we wanted to have for our town. And as Darren said, there was a few times we didn't agree, but I mean, at the end of the day, you know, we always respected the majority vote. Obviously, the administration staff, I mean, what can I say? Colleen, Denis leads the, lead our group here, Joey's sitting here. Brian would be very fortunate to have him. I mean, they're going to, they're going to get the same team again. And, you know, they, they gave me just a sense of security and trust that I knew that when it came to money or it came to anything that was, you know, in a bylaw or a policy that I need, it's crazy. There's a lot of stuff about that I don't understand. But I know Colleen was always there to, to tell me what had been done properly and legally. So thank you very much for that. You know, you know, we did a lot of things on this council, you know? I mean, a lot of the things were driven by just the fact that our town is expanding so quickly. You know, and so these things just had to occur. But, you know, there was, there was a few things. I mean, we had this cemetery and I don't know if that was brave or naive, but we started off with that, but we did that one. Denis with the multi-use trail park, he brought that forward and we did that. The other two things that I think, and Darren touched on them, is that no other council, if you believe the statistics, is our pandemic, right? I mean, a one in a hundred year pandemic and we happen to be the council that was the one in a hundred year pandemic. I mean, and, I mean, this was, this, there's no, there was no rules for this. There was no past history. Well, if there was, there wasn't much in the history books. So, you know, this was exceptional and, you know, for our administration and then for our council and for the community to, to work forward through it, right? With the vaccines and the mandates and the masks and that. So, you know, that, to me, will always be something that we can always be very proud of. And of course, the one in a thousand year rein event. I mean, maybe it's not going to be a one in a thousand year rein event anymore, but again, that's something that probably shouldn't occur for a few years, if you believe the statistics. So again, I mean, that was something, and again, that was right during the pandemic. So I mean, it was, again, how the town came together and rallied and, you know, all, all parts of the community came out and, I mean, Darren and I were both in that end of town. Darren got more water than I did, so that was unfortunate, Darren. But yeah, so I mean, those are two things that I think this council can carry forward that I don't think is going to be seen for quite a few years. And I guess the last thing, it's funny, I was watching the tape this morning with Daryl said about challenges and opportunities. I've used that in a lot of my speeches over the last four years and I think that's so important. I mean, yeah, this town is growing so quickly and there's so many things that we need to do. And they are challenges, but you're right. With the challenges come the opportunities to, to, to create what we need to address these challenges. And I, I think, I think this, this new council and our new mayor, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a really exciting four years. And, you know, you get that hospital up and running and, and whatever else is going to come along with it, it's going to be a great four years. So thank you and yeah. See you at the Christmas party, I guess.
You got one more announcement, Brian?
Oh, I do. Yes, I do. Yes. This one here, oh, over here.
It's called the one we can't talk about until the end of August.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were just, I thought I was just. Oh, I thought everybody knew about this now, so it's not, so I'm supposed to read this? Okay. So maybe I won't read the whole thing. Yeah, so this is obviously about our new hospital. Deputy Mayor Hedley and myself got a chance to vote there and be part of it. So yes, we've been waiting since December 10th patiently of last year for this announcement to occur. Minister Gordon was there along with our Minister Clark. And Brian Squidmarten was there and Dr. Desilay and I'm afraid I don't know the other gentleman's name that was there representing them.
Brell.
Brell, 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 the kidney part of it, right? Anyhow, it was, I mean, it was exciting. I mean, everybody's extremely pleased to finally have the announcement out. They're talking about starting to have construction people around in the next two weeks. They, they have talked about it perhaps being a little bit bigger than what they originally anticipated and a little bit more expensive than what they anticipated. I don't think they have final numbers yet. They talked about the Reno part of it as a very important part. You know, that there are so many people now that, that need help with their kidneys and that there's, they said, I think they said there was 28 people in our community that, that could use it right away. So I mean, that's exciting. Yeah, it's, I don't know, is there anything else, Colleen? Do you think I should? You were there, you were there with me.
Well, there's been a lot wrote. I guess the public would think there's been a lot of secrets kept under harassment on purpose because of the nondisclosureship we have assigned. And luckily or late, you know, we've been challenged with the fact that possibly things were not as kosher as they could be, but that's all coming from people that don't like secrets. And we all know how that feels when somebody knows a secret and is going to share it. So the secret's out of the bag. It's like, it was announced yesterday. It's, it's all legit, above board. It's going to be fantastic. We've been working in the background. We'll continue to do so on servicing this site. New council will be challenged with clearly paying for all of these improvements. But I would like the community to know as well that under policies under, under shared help of Vermont Health, there is an actual policy that asks for a contribution from the community. It's a $6 million contribution that as much as it's an old policy, that's the one we're going to hope to be held to and that people are standing. Under that policy, it won't just be Niipua would have to commit that $6 million, but our neighboring communities as well, at least the ones on the periphery, certainly at a higher percentage than others perhaps. We, we are going to start a discussions about how we decide on portioning that out and what we, the parameters and how we do so. Somewhat loyal maybe would happen under the care home scenario at the time, but things have changed since we go through a care home. We think there's new criteria that could be used and we'll flesh that out. We can also look at our rekind projects to this rather than be able to borrow it. We could, by just creating water and sewer in the road network, we can use those funds toward that similar to cash. So we're going to look at all those things over the next little while and make sure council clearly understands what our commitment is going to be in moving this forward. If you look at the whole scope of the project and what the end dollar might be, what they're asking from us is really just a rounding error. If you look at what we're giving, it's just peanuts in the scope of the big project. But for us, it isn't peanuts because to come up with $6 million or, or the lion's share of that $6 million from a community of this size is going to be a task for us. We, we just don't have, you know, spare cash on hand. We are all aware that all the big projects we more recently took on, we were able to achieve with the funding we had. And, you know, the funding that's been put in place for us, whether it be through grant planning or otherwise, we've been very fortunate to have the federal government and the potential governments acknowledge our growth, acknowledge, you know, what bylaw has brought here and the challenges that it brought and how we really do need that assistance to make sure we make these projects happen. So, you know, we were all at forum last night where everybody wants a lot of things. We, we're right at the proxy meeting, the major infrastructure in place for a lot of projects. As we found out into the next five, 10 years, we can easily move to other things that maybe weren't so critical to make sure the hospital would come and that we have the RCMP and the fire services here. And we can make some of those other things a reality as we move on. But right now, we are dispensed by our debt obligations that we currently have and those debt obligations that we might have to incur to make sure that we can service water and sewer to a hospital by 2025 and create the road network out there. So, so it's going to be a very interesting four years. Hope you have the faith in us to do so. You know, I'm just having Denis on staff and understanding logistics and working with our engineers on this. We have some pretty key people that we've worked with on these projects and have for the last three years. As much as the background, people didn't know where that was even occurring. It was, this didn't get here overnight and we're glad it was finally announced and we're going to move on. So a lot more information should be coming a lot more freely now as we, we start to step up some light and do what we were asked to do.
No, you're right. It's going to be the exciting next four years. Okay, if that's it, we'll move forward with adjournment. Moved by Councilor Peddle.
I'll send it to you, I'll help you do this.
This is sexy to find. Councilor Peddle. Be resolved, the council of town Niipua due Saturday, this regularly meeting council at 7:50 PM. All in favor?
Oh, that's long, just made me go off.
Yeah, that's right.